I'll call the meeting to order, it's Resolution 453. Call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. All council members are present along with Linda Parsons, Chief Administrative Officer, Sherry Tolome, Municipal Clerk, and Matthew Alter Foreman. I need to move in the second or open the meeting. Gary, have LeAnn, all in favor, carried. Number two, approval of the agenda. Everyone is fine with the agenda as it is. I'll read Resolution 454, be resolved that the meeting agenda for a regular council meeting of December 2nd, 2025 be accepted as presented. Mover to the secondor. Ken, seconded by Derek, all in favor, carried. 3.1, our regular meeting of council on November the 18th. Everyone had a chance to look at it, are there any errors or admissions? Hearing now, I'll read Resolution 455, be resolved that the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of council on November the 18th, 2025 be accepted as presented. Mover to the secondor. Moved by Clint, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. 3.2, the meeting of the whole minutes on November the 28th. All is well there too regarding the minutes. I'll read Resolution 456, be resolved that the minutes of the special meeting of council on November 28th, 2025 be accepted as presented. Mover to the secondor, Gary, seconded by Derek, all in favor, carried. We don't have a swear jar, but we've got a phone jar. No problem. That leads us to number four, delegations, Tenth Town Garden Club delegation application. So, whoops, sorry Gary.
I'm going to declare a conflict of interest on this one, Larry.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll just go to the next room to you guys here the lead.
Okay. Thank you. And who's the speaker for the garden club?
I am, thank you. Good evening, members of council. I'm Linda Leslie, representing Tenth Town Garden Club, and I have with me here a couple other members, Luela Lozman and Bonnie Gibbard. We would like to thank the council for allowing us to keep our gardening tools in the shower shed at the welcome spot, but as you probably well know, it's been broken into a couple of times. Our tools have been taken out of there, and this last time, we had just in early spring bought a whole bunch of battery operated tools. Some of them haven't really even been used at all, and the shed was broken into, and of course, all those new tools with the batteries have been stolen. So we've been thinking, trying to decide what we should do, and we went ahead and purchased a C can container. It's a small one, eight by eight. Now we're hoping that council can help us find a location in Minnetonka close to Village Square, which is just right kitty corner to here, to set that C can container on. I had sent a couple of pictures over with suggestions, and we're wondering if one of them would work as a place to set that small C can. Our first idea was to have it set at by Village Square, where there's a bit of a cement pad right now, which would give us something to set it on, and it would be a little more level. I know that there is a handicap sign at that location, but I don't know if it has ever been used, whether it's something that needs to remain there. I'm wondering if we could just remove that handicap sign and set the C can on that location. That would be our primary idea. The second thought we had was at the corner of the town hall. We want someplace where it's kind of going to be out of the way, yet accessible for us to get to our tools and whatnot. So, at this point in time, we're open to any suggestions or ideas from council or approval that we can go ahead and set that C can up at location. So, thank you.
Before we go any further or whatever, I just want to say I'm going to be out for council to you ladies here, and plus all your other members, that thank you for the beautiful job that you're doing, because we do get so many compliments on the work that you do, do to beautify our community, so thank you.
And thank you too to council for offering your financial assistance to help us maintain flower beds and do all the work that we do. Sometimes it's tiring, but you know, we enjoy it, and we know council does, and we know that anybody driving through Minnetonka has made comments that yes, they do appreciate it too, so.
How many members do you have presently on the?
Right now, we have nine committed members.
That's great.
And most of them, I might add, are, you know, seniors by declaration, 15 and over.
That's good. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the placement of that? Your first option was of course where the coffee was, but if it doesn't go there, and you put it on the other spot, then it'd be just on the grass or whatever, so you would need something underneath that?
Yes, we might have to do a little bit of landscaping there to make it level, and then I'm thinking maybe four cement pads at the corners to set it on, you know, so it doesn't shift or anything.
Is that a cement pad sitting there, or like, it doesn't look like a very level one, but is that what that is, or is that just against the whole?
That is a cement pad. There used to be a tower there for radio or TV.
It was a fire department.
Okay, yes. So it's not very big if it would not fit the whole C can, which is eight by eight, which isn't that big, and.
It'd be handy there though, because.
Absolutely, yes.
You're thinking more to the south of the building, right? To the very corner more of the building?
Yeah, like, you know, we don't want it to stick out and be able to maneuver around, so ideally, if it was maybe alongside of the town hall, on the east, southeast corner, you know? And we've been thinking of other locations where we possibly could set it, so it would be close to the Village Square, but I can't think of one, so.
Is there any other questions?
We'll do defense compound work right here, by the fire shed.
You mean the fire station?
Nope, we have one crossroad.
Any place off there?
Yeah.
Water, place where they get the water out of?
Yeah.
Well, I think the ladies wanted a word, the tools would be handy right where the garden is itself, correct?
Exactly, yeah. And then I'm thinking too, if it's in your compound there, then we would need to have access by way of a key to get into that compound, if it's right in the compound itself.
We could use a component, really, I think there's just recycled bits stored in there.
Is there no further questions? I don't mean to rush through or whatever, but if there, do you have any questions for us, or?
Ladies?
I don't think so, no.
No.
No. If it was to be placed at the southeast corner behind town, we certainly wouldn't want it to be in the way of any garbage removal or even extensions to the town hall, or so we're deciding. So, we think about, it's likely close there and out of the way, but so is it on the cement pad, for the handicap?
I know for the town hall corner, there'd have to be a little bit of excavation done to remove the cement that's there now, because I don't know whether it would be sufficient or fit into us setting it there, so.
Yeah, we could discuss it later or whatever, and then we certainly get back to you very shortly, I think.
Okay, sounds very good. Be that.
And you're certainly welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting, but the only thing, next on our agenda is to go into camera, that's the word part. You're certainly welcome to come back afterwards and.
Thank you very much, yes.
And join us, and thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Well, we look forward to hearing from you, whatever your decision is, your recommendation.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Maybe we'll get Gary to come up. That'd be something we forgot, left in there for an hour.
I forgot already. It's getting long in there.
We'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is number six, public works, and we'll move into camera. Resolution 457, be resolved that pursuant to Section 1523 of Municipal Act, despite subsections one and two, council shall meet as a committee and hold a closing meeting, continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal, a matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting rich discussion in public, with prejudice in municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. Pursuant to Section 831D, council members shall keep in confidence in matter discussed at a meeting closed to the public under subsection 1523, until the matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to Section 941H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under Clause 831D. And the time is?
6:13.
6:13?
Yes.
Okay. I need to move in the second for the resolution, Gary, moved, LeAnn second, all in favor, carried.
Sorry, Sherry.
Resolution to come out of camera, 458, be resolved that pursuant to Section 1524 of Municipal Act, this meeting shall reopen, be reopened to the public at?
7:31.
7:31. Moved by Ken, seconded by Gary, all in favor, carried. Move into final statement at the council table. Gary.
Yeah.
I want to go over it also, if anybody have any questions, but Gary, he has the answer.
He's all the answers.
Is it all the answers? There's an A still among them too, so. Probably one of the lowest ones I've ever read, I'll see. Didn't know till I got your answers. But yeah, no, if there's anything at all, try and answer, answer the questions.
Are there any questions? None, or read Resolution number 459. Be resolved that accounts payable checks number 14623 to 14670, and a amount of $66,552.87 be accepted and approved as presented. Mover to the secondor. Derek, seconded by Clint, all in favor, carried. 7.1.2, payment of payroll. Any questions? Resolution 460, be resolved that the payroll pay period 24, 2025, for the period from November the 8th to November the 21st, 2025, and in the amount of $28,731.21, be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Moved by Gary, seconded by LeAnn, all in favor, carried. 7.1.3, payment of council per diems. Any questions? I'll read Resolution 461, be resolved that the council per diems, November 1st to November the 30th, 2025, with the amount of $9,195.35 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Moved by Derek, seconded by Gail. Any discussion? All in favor, carried. 7.1.3.1, Parkland Regional Library Expense Breakdown. It's quite a good size budget, I remember the thought of that way, or took note, I guess.
Many libraries are actually part of the Parkland Regional Library.
That's a good question.
It'd be Broadland and it'd be that parkland, that Broadland, Dawfins, Swan River.
Just looking on here, Ocker River, St. Rose, Dawfins. I think so, yeah. I've seen Dawfins, it would be Grandview.
Is Swan River the wrong?
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
Northwest, sorry.
It is.
So this is one of the, how many were involved in it, but it was a fair chunk of money there.
At least the province gives a nice amount too, I think. Are you still looking for a rep to fulfill the?
Library?
Yeah, our, on our.
All right, councillor Jensen is on the library board.
You're, you're library.
Yeah.
And me.
And Linda.
Oh, Linda. So, council.
That's why I'm not sure how it happened, I guess.
If the council has any questions regarding this or whatever, you can pass it on to Laura and Clint, and then they can take it to the next speaker.
Well, just noticing the size of the budget, it looks like it's, yeah.
Looks good.
And it's been working for quite a few years, so I'm good.
Our read Resolution 462, be resolved that the Parkland Regional Library Expense Breakdown Report for 2025 be accepted as presented. Mover to the secondor, LeAnn, seconded by Gary, any discussion? All in favor, carried. That was Gary.
That's seconded.
Okay, sorry, I had it the other way around.
Either way is good.
Administration 8.1, Watershed Subdistrict of Fuentes. And everyone is good with staying on their subdistricts that are on here now?
We still have a vacant through.
One vacant?
We have one spot vacant.
So what councillor is not on here to fill that vacancy?
I'll just speak about it, if anybody's interested, it's a lovely committee to be on, like if you're interested in the work they do. Do a lot of basic, you know, stream bank stabilizations, and lots to do with water retention and stuff like that, so to me, it's of interest, so I enjoy it, versus maybe, oh, we just talked about the Parkland Regional Library, which is good, but it's off my wheelhouse, so if anybody.
Two books, you said. Two books, you said.
Yeah, two books. So maybe Clint or Derek.
Who's not on anymore?
LeAnn.
LeAnn stepped in. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But it is good, we meet about, well, I'm on the main board, so if we meet every six weeks, three, four times here perhaps, would be.
Max.
Yeah, would kind of be the quota for somebody coming into that position, unless you want to get on the main board, take my job next year, then there'd be more meetings. But it is good, it's a nice workflow, everybody gets along well, and it's a good cause, and it's just, it's fun to be on the committee.
It's interesting, I didn't live in there since the start.
Exactly. Yeah, it doesn't matter whoever wants to. Which ever, yeah.
Clint, perfect, thank you, Clint.
That's awesome, I think you'll enjoy it, Clint.
I think you'll find it interesting.
Be across the river.
If you want, I could read out to the members that are on, they're knowing what subdistricts they're on.
Sure.
Gary Bartel, councillor in McLaren rate payer for the area of Roaring River, Fable Creek Subdistrict. Clint Jensen and Peter Toker rate payer. Upper Swan River Lobstick Creek Subdistrict, Larry Mahalter. And Stuart Wondley, Lower Swan River Sinclair Creek Subdistrict, Ken Reader and Clarence Beek, Woody River Birch River Subdistrict. And each subdistrict is, brings forth projects to the main board, and then from there, they can decide on which projects are done. As of now, I believe, Gary, that we are looking for projects for the next year.
We are, yes, we're always looking for projects, anything, you know? And if you're not sure, just take your headie, and he'll, you know, sort all that out. But he'd be good to just talk to ahead of time, and sit down with him, he's really, really competent, and he is. Yes, the baddest wells are part of the program, so, yeah.
We're good, I'll read Resolution 463, and if I had seen this first, and I wouldn't have went through the other two around, but. Are we all just still in the vacant spot with councillor Jensen's lady?
Sounds good.
Resolution 463, be resolved that municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman appoint the following individuals as members of the Swan Lake Water District and Subdistrict Committees. Roaring River Fable Creek Subdistrict, Gary Bartel, Deputy Reeve, Raymond McLaren rate payer. Upper Swan River Lobstick Creek Subdistrict, Clint Jensen councillor, Peter Toker rate payer. Lower Swan River Sinclair Creek Subdistrict, Larry Mahalter Reeve, Stuart Wondley rate payer. Woody River Birch River Subdistrict, Ken Reader councillor, and Clarence Beek rate payer. Mover to the secondor for the resolution, Ken, seconded by Derek, any discussion? All in favor, carried. Now we move on to 8.2, Parkland Regional Library Appointment. It's paid for, I'll read the Resolution 464, be resolved that municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman appoint the following individuals as members of the Parkland Regional Library Board, trustee Clint Jensen councillor, alternate Linda Parsons, Chief Administrative Officer. Mover to the secondor, should appoint those people to the board. Gary, LeAnn, all in favor, carried, thank you. 8.3, resignation as animal control officer.
What's the resolution? Just the resolution.
Just the resolution, oh. Resolution 465, be resolved that council municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman accept the resignation at date of those as animal control officer effective Monday, November the 17th. Mover to the secondor. Derek, seconded by Ken, all in favor, carried. 8.4. Need approval item in regards to our council meeting as a committee of the whole. I'll read Resolution 466, be resolved that the 2026 Regular Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting, schedule be accepted and approved as presented. Any mover and secondor, there's no call for discussion? Moved by Gary, seconded by Clint, any discussion? All in favor, carried. Number nine, bylaws and policies. None. Number 10, announcements. Gary, you have any?
Can you start on the other side, I gotta think on this side.
Okay.
Sorry, Ken.
Oh, no, I gotta think. The watershed meeting, they are definitely scratching for projects, so anybody knows anything that needs to happen, farmers need to talk to the watershed.
Or in fact, any landowner, even in town too, especially in regards to well sealing or riverbank stabilization too, is just one of the programs, so. Good, Gail?
Oh, I had a COPP meeting, everything's running good, still trying to get a few more on board in Bozeman, but I don't know that, that was it.
Okay, Clint?
No meetings.
Derek?
I had a planning district meeting, and basically, we're just gonna finalize redoing the maps for the next meeting when they call it, that's from the chair.
LeAnn?
Most of it's been by text and stuff, no, I think RISE is next week, I think. But I just wanted to touch base on where the Bozeman Arena is at, they got their big overhead door installed, everything's done. They replaced all of the lights on over the ice surface, and they found about 130 pucks up in the rafters.
Wow.
So, we were short, so I think now we'll be good, but ice is coming along, and the fans are all fixed, everything's working good. Yeah, we've got a really good, it's a good crew there, they're really working hard to get things back, and looking forward to the 19th, I guess, or the 20th. And I think the Lions hope is sort of be partnering with them.
And that doors are donation from the community foundation money from next year?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then the kitchen stuff, got some stuff, and then that was kind of like phase one, so I think all of those items were purchased as well, and so the lighting was done in the lobby, and then I think they'll probably do some more stuff, but I think they were looking for somebody to pick up the hose reel from Winnipeg. I don't know if that got looked after, but I am going next week, so I'll see and check if they've got somebody to pick up. But yeah, they're pretty excited about getting that stuff, because the hose gets dragged out across the dirt and stuff, and that's just nicer to have, they might look at the other arenas, and the reel, it's a big whole thing, it works good, so, anyway.
They've done lots of work, lots of work.
Oh, yeah, it's crazy, what they've done, so they're looking forward to getting some of the boards, I think, replaced and fixed, because they're pretty banged up, and that one fat corner, so, yeah. So that's exciting, and I don't know what they're having, as far as there'll be no, maybe no snow to do any. So, that's exciting, and I don't know what they're having as far as there'll be no, maybe no snow to do any much.
Yeah.
Like dog sleds and some reading, dogs like guys and stuff like that, but, yeah, stay tuned.
Good, thank you, Gary.
Yeah, I got my thoughts together now. We went to the AMM.
We did.
And then Larry, myself, and, yeah, it was good. The trade floor actually was maybe a little smaller than it has been in the past, but it was still good. Took in one meeting that we all sat in on, the making the last twelve months count.
Breakout session.
Yeah, breakout session for an hour, and it was really good, to just, my personal, take the last while, being in, not going to be around next year, I'm planning not to anyways, was to have my own personal projects done up to date, so I've accomplished, you know, seventy-five percent of that. But just for Linda in the office and everybody else that's planning on staying, just really work together to not leave them in a not-knowing situation. Let's communicate well, have as much information relayed on, and put them in a real good position, so we're not hindering things moving forward. And that was, you know, a good message that was, you know, delivered that day, and it kind of hit me as part to what I could have failed not doing, I think, to a certain degree, you know, just always been more of a public works guy, you know, not so much an office guy, but, yeah, the office is equally as important to communicate with them, leave them in a good, a good position, knowing where we're at, and hopefully, we don't have to leave any projects that are locked on, and just relaying whatever we can get up and on, so. It was a good, it was a good thing to attend, it was fun. Yeah, meetings were good, suppers were excellent, it was all good. Had fun.
Good, thank you, Gary, and of course, I attended, attended the AMM, too, and and did speak with other councillors or whatever from other municipalities, and as Gary had suggested in that breakout session, after hearing some of the problems that other municipalities have gone through, or what we have gone through ourselves in the last few years or whatever, it's, we're certainly not alone. You know, there was, there's many, many problems in it, and hopefully, working with the provincial government or whatever, we can gain some more help in, in doing that. What else did we, was it again? Oh, there was twenty-plus resolutions that were brought forward, and I think pretty well all of them were passed, and one that interested me quite a bit was the AMM to lobby the provincial government on our behalf to have some provincial assistance in cemetery expenses, because even with their own, it's getting to be quite a quite a large number, but it's something that has to be done, there's no, no cutting of order, our grass has to be cut, and everything has to be maintained. This week, I have so far three related RM meetings to go to. I had one last night, which was very disappointing in the fact that it was for the Swan Valley Health Foundation, and we were notified that as of Friday, Prairie Mountain Health will not will not give us a secretary treasurer anymore, which we used to have. This organization started out in nineteen ninety-five, since then Prairie Mountain Health has supplied the secretary treasurer and plus maintenance crew to help look after the house that we own and condo, which we rent out to the contracting nurses and doctors or whatever you have. So, that's all gone, so now we find ourselves scrambling to somehow fill positions or whatever, keep going forward, so it's going to be, it's going to be quite the challenge, because there was a lot of work that Prairie Mountain Health did do. But in saying that, I'm just going to come straight on and say Prairie Mountain House is in big trouble right now, like with the hospitals going gray listed and everything else. I just don't see how, how cutting this out after starting up in nineteen ninety-five or whatever, and all that money that we contributed to the hospital to buy different equipment and everything, and everything was running smoothly, so I don't know where this comes from. But it's something we have to deal with, and we'll get through it anyways, in one form or another.
It's disappointing.
It, yeah, it is disappointing, after so many years of, of having that working relationship, and then all of a sudden, it's gone, so.
No warning, and it's gone, basically, yeah.
Yeah, but like I said, we'll, we'll work through it, and, and we'll go from there. And I have a meeting coming up, which is related to the municipality, but it's through the Swan Valley Community Foundation or whatever, presenting a check to the Health Foundation, so I'm just going to be active to accept the, accept the check and pass it on to them. To the Health Foundation. Do you have any good news?
I enjoyed my first AMM, that was fantastic for me, so that was great, got to see how things were done. The breakout session was very important to me, I took a lot of notes because of a long list of things that we're going to do in two thousand twenty-six before things change, so I'm excited about that, and, um, I don't know, what else? Got a great group in our office, pretty happy to have them, and, um, sorry. That's all I got right now.
Sure. All is well. And I forgot to also mention that because of the Swan Valley Health Foundation, that the CT scanner and the clinic were a big part of the, of the foundation that goes about, so. We are doing a lot, a lot of good work.
Yes.
And in that, I guess that's it for announcements. Next on agenda is to move into camera. I'll read resolution four six seven. Be resolved that pursuant to section one five two three of Municipal Act, despite subsections one and two, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal and a matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public with prejudice of municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman's ability to carry out activities or negotiations. Pursuant to section eighty-three one D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting closed to the public under subsection one five two three until the matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section ninety-four one H, a council member becomes disqualified for reaching the requirement of confidentiality under clause eighty-three one D, and the time being?
Seven fifty-six.
Seven fifty-six? Thank you. Moving to second for that resolution, Gary, seconded by Gail, all in favor? Carried. I'll read resolution to come out of camera, four six eight, be resolved that pursuant to section one five two four of Municipal Act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at?
Eight fifty-five.
Yep.
Eight fifty-five. Moved by Derek, seconded by Ken, any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Resolution for adjournment, four six nine, be resolved that this regularly meeting of council be adjourned at eight?
Six.
Fifty-six.
Eight fifty-six, moved by Leanne, seconded by Gail, all in favor? Carried. Meeting is adjourned.